Good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name is Debbie Lewis and I am the Northeast Regional Coordinator for NEON. Today, we are at God's Battalion of Prayer to discuss several things concerning the crisis Haiti and the diaspora. I want to thank the pastors of this house, Pastor Cockfield, Bishop Cockfield, Reverend Al Cockfield, and First Lady Lynette Cockfield for allowing us to have this space. Because of social distancing, we have a few elected officials and stakeholders in the building and we are streaming live for the rest of you. So, thank you for joining this evening. So, as the diaspora, we have come together to make a conscious choice to help in every way possible. So, you will hear tonight from elected officials. You will hear from community stakeholders. You will also get live information about what has been happening since the earthquake because this crisis has started since then. Okay? So, with that being said, I would like to... I would like to introduce Utsen Francois, just to greet you all until we have our next speaker.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Utsen Tyson Francois, trustee of the Christian United Village Shrem Brown in New York, a native of Haiti, eighty-four, migrated to the United States of America and as a migrant, always continued to be a migrant here in the U.S. It brings me, as much as I want to say a pleasure to be standing here before you to talk about what's taking place over at the border. I am one of those persons that was actually in Del Rio and San Antonio. Never in my life, after so many years of becoming a citizen of these very United States, can I sincerely say to you that I can say that while cities are always being shackled, feet, arms, to only think that this is a land of opportunity and freedom, to know that the processing is either you are deported or you have a processing opportunity and at times it's not even granted to you. And I'll end by saying, as I saw that lady being, I mean, excuse me, had a child under the bridge, that should tell you where we are today in the United States. So, thank you so much for being here. We welcome you. Let's continue to work together for the people of Haiti. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Now, we will have Councilmember Farrah Lewis, who's going to speak about some actions and some things that happened at the border. Good evening, everyone. And I would like to thank Councilmember Danique Miller from Queens. He's also the Chair of the Black Latino Asian Caucus, which is from the City Council. I want to thank him for participating and being here with us this evening as we have this very important conversation. I'm Councilmember Farrah Lewis. I represent the Forty-Fifth Council District in Brooklyn. I'm a Haitian-American young woman from Brooklyn. And after seeing some really egregious pictures online of Border Patrol agents utilizing their reins to beat, hit Haitian migrants who are crossing over massive water to go into Mexico to get food for their family to cross back over to the encampment that was created by Border Patrol agents. They were being attacked and being forced to stay in Mexico with bags of food in their hands that they wanted to take back to their families. And everybody has seen those images on social media and in the media in general. And as much as it hurt me, I think it hurt the world. It hurt people who have a heart. And I quickly contacted some local elected officials to see how helpful they could be. And someone just told me to call my pastor, Pastor A.R. Bernard. And he got on the phone with me and some of the leaders from the church and some leaders from the community. And we decided to go to Del Rio to do a fact-finding mission to see how we can address the matter on another level. And the things that we saw there were completely harsh and egregious. It was disgusting. It was horrific how they were treating black people. And I know they're Haitian, but they're also black. And I think that's the narrative that we need to share with the world, with the community. These are people that look just like me, just like us. And it was... It was hard to watch babies sleep in dust and mud, pregnant women breathing in dust, women asking for medical services for their children and being denied, being denied food for their children. And the minute myself and the delegation from New York got to Del Rio, got by the encampment, the cross-examination that we gave to White House officials and to Border Patrol agents, it was a bit too much for them. They told us to leave. And the next day, everybody was gone. The hardest part for us is to see three thousand people disappear because we were looking out for them. We wanted to support them. We were there for them. The hardest part about all of it was to see children unaccompanied by parents who died on the way, who were murdered, who were raped. They didn't make it to the other side, but their children did. And to know that they're in this world and in this country by themselves in force of care and there's no one to advocate for them is the hardest part, I would say, for us during that time because we really wanted to support all of them, but most importantly, the children. In addition to the treatment we received at the border, we were also pulled over, guns drawn and told we were... that we had bodies in the car. And we were detained. We didn't know if we were going to make it back to New York. We didn't know where we were. We're in the middle of Texas. And if you're Haitian, they would call it napali bati because we had no service on our cell phones. A lot of people text me and I'm still seeing until now and I apologize if I didn't respond. We had no service and we didn't know if we were going to make it back. And eventually, the New York delegation that went to Del Rio, we will be able to tell our story. But I would say we went out there as advocates to fight for these people and to help these people. And we found ourselves in the same position as these people who came from Panama, from Brazil, from Chile, looking for an opportunity and being sent back to a country that they left so many years ago and giving up their houses and their businesses for an opportunity. So, when we reach out to the federal government and to elected officials, we're saying, "Support these people. Give them an opportunity for political asylum. Give them opportunity to stay here" because they came all this way through jungles, crossing waters, fighting tigers. I don't know if you've heard these stories, but people were fighting animals to get to Del Rio, Texas. So, I want to thank Chair Miller and Chair Adams of the City Council, who signed onto a letter that we're going to send to President Biden to address some of the concerns that we saw and things that we need support for, like resettlement funds for migrants that are here. And in a few minutes, you're going to hear from leaders of an organization that have been doing phenomenal work in the last couple of weeks for migrants that are here in New York, in New Jersey, Louisiana, Texas, and a couple of other states around the country. And attorneys from Community Citizenship Now and some independently providing support, but it's not enough. So, we're asking people for their support. You'll also hear from Dr. Disoume. He's a City Council member in North Miami and who also was, went to Del Rio with the New York delegation and will share more information about our next steps. I want to say, let us not forget the people that were deported, which was about ten thousand or more. And then, let's not forget about the people that are here in the United States looking for an opportunity, who don't have a place to stay, don't have food to eat, and do not have support and who are relying on us to give them something, some opportunity, a glimmer of hope. And that's what we try to give them each and every day out of our own pockets. So, I ask for support for volunteers as we drive people to trial, as we drive people to the water education to try to get their children admitted into schools and so on and so forth. So, thank you for the opportunity. And now, I'm going to call Dr. Alex Disoume, who's also a City Council member in North Miami, Florida. Thank you. Before Honorable Disoume comes, I just wanted to backtrack a little bit and give you all... I'm looking here and I'm looking there because there's people live on here. So, I just wanted to give you a little history, give you a little information about NEON. It is the largest network of Haitian-elected and appointed officials in the United States. The membership represents millions of constituents all across the nation. And NEON members are dedicated to supporting domestic policies, legislation, and issues affecting Haitians living in the United States. This conversation tonight is happening in several states simultaneously. Some started a little bit before and some are currently happening now. And I think we had some happening yesterday as well. And so, this conversation is happening in over ten states about the diaspora and the work that needs to be done. So, this was a well-coordinated effort by our Chairman, Honorable Alex Disoume, who is the Councilmember in North Miami, Florida, who continues to fight for the progress of the diaspora, the Haitian people and the community at large. And before he comes on to speak, I want to recognize the members of the New York Chapter, Assemblywoman Radmese Bouchard, Assemblymember Clyde Vanel, Assemblywoman Michael Mikayel, sorry, Mikayel Solajes, Assemblywoman Kimberly Jean-Pierre, Assemblywoman Matilde Frantous, Assemblymember Farah Soufrance Boris, Honorable Carrie Solajes, Deputy Mayor Zach Clalina, Councilmember Farrah Lewis, Councilman Matthew Eugene, Honorable Tyson Francois, and Sabrina Charles Pierre. All right? So, I just wanted to make sure I recognized these members. In addition to them, we have School Board Member Ashley Lebel and School Board Member Jerry D. Jean Pierre. All right? All of these members, some are with us, some are on this livestream and some are coordinating other conversations. And so, now, without further ado, we will have Councilmember Alex Disoume.
Thank you, Debbie. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure for me to be here from the great state, well, not really the great state of Florida. This is the great state of New York. Unfortunately, our governor said, passed an executive order a couple of weeks ago saying that the migrants, you know, would not be allowed in Florida or with the services that you got to hear tonight that we are fighting for. They would be denied services. So, these are conversations and some of the things that we are going through is black folks all around the country. Again, my name is Chairman Alex Disoume. I have the, indeed, and honor to represent the Haitian-American Elected Official Network, known as NEON. We are in seventeen states, including, in addition to District of Columbia, we have two members. Since the incident in Del Rio, as you know, Haiti has been on the news since the beginning of the year. I mean, I said to someone, since I was a little boy, I can recall Haiti being going through stuff. And I can't really think of a moment that we had when Haiti was not going through issues. So, earlier this year, we had the assassination of the President of Haiti, followed by the earthquake. And a week later, the, you know, the tropical storm. And then, followed that, it's incidents, incidents, incidents to where we are now. And as you know, just a few weeks after all this, we had the incident in Del Rio, which Councilmember, the Chairwoman of the New York Chapter of NEON, talked about what happened in Del Rio. When I received the calls from Breline Joseph, who's an immigrant, immigration advocate who's been on the ground dealing with the situation in Del Rio for years, there was only six thousand folks under the bridge. The next day, that number doubled. And it just got worse from there. And I immediately mobilized all of our members from across the country. And we mobilized a plane and I got on the plane and traveled to Del Rio with several members. When I got to Del Rio, we were supposed to be there for a press conference. That press conference turned into humanitarian aid in terms of what NEON, the organization, started doing. And the treatment of the folks of what happened was indeed a tragedy. What you saw on the screen, on TV, it was worse for those of us who was in Del Rio. But we have been in touch with the Biden administration almost on a weekly basis, dealing with the various different agencies, the DHS. The morning of, our Congressperson, Donaldson, touched me and had a conversation with Secretary, the Homeland Secretary, Alejandro Mayorkas. And he expressed to us that the migrants weren't going to be expelled back to Haiti. We asked him, "Where did they come from?" And they named every single place in South America but Haiti. But yet, they were being expelled to Haiti, only to learn that there were some other folks from, some migrants from Africa and other places who are in Haiti right now as we are spoken, and was not going to Haiti. But I am going to take a few minutes because we do have an honorable in our presence. And it's indeed, I'm going to call the Vice Chair of the New York Chapter of NEON, who will guide you through the introduction. So, Honorable Clyde Vanel, please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Disoume. And welcome, everybody. Great to see everyone here. Great to see everyone online that signed up and are watching, all the folks that are watching online. Again, we're talking about our IET sharing, right? We're talking about our motherland of Haiti and making sure that, you know, we in the diaspora properly do what we can to take Haiti to a better place. We are in a, we have many challenges, but we're very, we're so hopeful for all of the talent and all of the positions and what we can do in the United States to be able to assist Haiti move forward. And the future of Haiti is bright, though it may look bleak. One of the things that's very important is that we understand diaspora and Haiti cannot do it alone. We need strong partners. And it's a blessing to be able to have, to be in this country of America and to have strong partners in the United States of America. Today, we have the opportunity to work with one of the most powerful people in the United States that is a friend of Haiti. He's not a stranger to Haiti. We have the Majority Leader of the United States of America, the United States Senate, Chuck Schumer, who's here. Chuck Schumer, come on up.
Let me take off my mask and say hello to everybody here at Dr. Cockfield's great church, the God's Battalion of Prayer Church. And let me thank those in the audience, but the hundreds and even thousands who are online to listen. And you, indeed, as they, I guess they say, the diaspora. Is that okay? Diaspora, diaspora are so important to New York, to Brooklyn, but also to the Haitian community and to the Haitian people in Haiti. I want to thank Alex Disoume from Florida for coming up here and leading this great organization. And I want to thank our leaders from New York who are here. Farrah Louise, I saw her a minute ago. There she is. Clyde Vanel, who introduced me. We also have Danique Miller from Queens. Where's Danique? There he is. And we have our Councilmember from Rockland County, Tyson Francois. Thank you, Tyson. And we have Matthew Eugene, who was, I think, the first Haitian elected to the City Council. Is that right, uh, yes? So, let me say this. First, the Haitian community here in New York and in Brooklyn is one of our strongest and fastest-growing communities. They are wonderful, wonderful people. And I've had a close relationship for many decades, long before I was a senator, because many of the people in Haiti wisely chose Brooklyn as a place to come to live. And I am the first senator from Brooklyn, as well as the first New York Majority Leader. And I want to pledge to all of you in the diaspora and to everyone who is part of this great organization that I am committed to do everything to ensure a bright future for the people of Haiti, for the nation of Haiti. And I agree with Clyde. There is, things look bleak now, but there is a bright future for Haiti. And why? Because of the talent, the strength, the perseverance, the good heart of the Haitian people that I have come to know and love in my days as a legislator here. So, let me talk about a few of the issues that face us. Like you, this disaster has, whoops, that's my cellphone. Excuse me. Like you, I was horrified by what happened at the southern border. And like you, my heart breaks for the people of Haiti in the diaspora and the broader community who have endured so much. We saw the images of what happened in so many parts of Haiti and it broke our hearts. People desperate for help because of the power of tropical storm grace and not able to get that help. And I've had many meetings with people like Farrah and like Clyde and like Danique, who are here today, to try and make sure we can get them help. So, this is something we must do and I will talk about that in a minute. First, I'd like to talk about Haitian asylum seekers and Title Forty-two. Like you, I was horrified to see the images of the southern border as Haitian asylum seekers who simply wanted to get safety and come to America, which has always been our tradition. The Statue of Liberty stands in our harbor, looking to escape tyranny and the problems that they have faced were met at our border with unimaginable indignity. It was one of the saddest moments in recent history. Images of Haitian immigrants, of migrants being hit with whips and other forms of physical violence, completely, completely unacceptable. This behavior must be addressed. There must be accountability. These images turn our stomachs. It must be stopped, this kind of violence. Haiti has experienced extreme turmoil, of course, after the assassination of President Moïse in July, then a tropical storm, and then a seven-point-two earthquake. So, people sought refuge. That's what people have done for centuries. And America usually greets them with open arms, but not here. When I saw those images from Del Rio, I was immediately called, I immediately called on this administration to put a halt to the expulsion of Haitian asylum seekers. I was the first major official to do that. The administration wasn't happy with me, but what's right is right. Title Forty-two was a nasty policy put in place by none other than Donald Trump, who hated immigrants and particularly immigrants of color. No doubt about that. We should repeal it. And that's what I am calling on the administration to do so that we can give people fair treatment when they come to our border. And two weeks ago, I joined with Senator Menendez, the Chairman of our Foreign Relations Committee, and fourteen other Senate Democrats in a letter to Secretary Mayorkas, Secretary of Homeland Security, Secretary Blinken, the Secretary of State, condemning the mistreatment of Haitian migrants at the border and urging them to start supporting some long-term stability in Haiti. We also urged them to appoint a new special envoy to Haiti immediately since the previous one quit because he was so upset by what was happening. Now, here's some good news. As part of the Build Back Better being considered in the Senate right now, I am working to secure funding so how, so we can transform our southern border and we can receive asylum seekers with the human dignity and fairness they receive. Every person should get a fair adjudication. And if they qualify for asylum, they should be allowed into our country and we should welcome them as we have welcomed so many members of the Haitian, so many of the Haitian people here. So, we are doing that. And we also are trying to make the administration realize that the system at the border is broken and we have to do better as to how we treat people at our doorstep. We need the proper facilities, proper medical care, and the right staff to receive families and children, children, who are fleeing violence. Bottom line, these policies that are being enforced right now and the horrible treatment must stop immediately. Now, let me talk about immigration. As you know, I believe firmly in immigration. It is the hope and future of my home borough of Brooklyn, my city of New York, and of the United States of America. That's why we're better than anyone else. We accept immigrants from around the globe. They can be rich, they can be poor, they can be middle class, they can be black or brown or white, whoever they are. We welcome them. And immigrants work so hard for America. They want to be Americans and they work hard for a better life for themselves, a better life for their families. And by doing that, they create a better life in our city and our country. So, we are nothing if we're not a nation of immigrants. That's one of the most important facts in America. Immigrants are dreamers. Immigrants are doers. And there's no better group of immigrants who personify that than the Haitian community. Such talented people. It's an amazing, amazing group. So, we should be welcoming them. My middle name, it so happens, a few of my friends know, is Ellis, named for Ellis Island. My daughter's middle name is Emma. We named her Emma because Emma Lazarus was the poet who wrote on the pedestal of the Statue of Liberty, "Give me your poor, your tired, your huddled masses yearning to be free." So, I've led the fight for immigration reform. I passed the first law that I passed the first law that allowed people to stay in this country back in the 1980s. Ronald Reagan was actually, was a Republican, but he was for immigration. And we passed a bill in the Senate, it didn't pass in the House, but now we are trying in Build Back Better to get a path to citizenship. The parliamentarian ruled against us, but we're not stopping, we are continuing to fight so that immigrants can be treated well in the Build Back Better bill. We have all, I also promise you that we are getting, as I said, in the Build Back Better bureau's money so we can treat people who come to the border adequately. So that is very, very important. In addition, I worked hard to get TPS when the many tragedies hit Haiti. I was one of the leaders in making sure that the administration, whoever they were, granted TPS, and then when it was about to expire, get it extended so our Haitian brothers and sisters can stay here without fear of deportation. And I promise you this, we will continue. We will have to pass a new TPS bill for people who came in the last few months because it was only renewed, I think, in June. So we have all the people who came because of grace, and we need a new TPS bill for them, and we need to extend the old TPS bill so people can stay here. Thank you. Okay, so those are the things, and one more thing I want to say. As I said, the Haitian people are beautiful people. We need to listen, this country, how are we going to get some good results and help Haiti? The one thing this nation has not done enough of, and this is one of my goals, is it did not listen to the diaspora. The Haitian diaspora knows best out of how to bring democracy and fair elections to Haiti, which we haven't had, and how to bring better more prosperity and better economic paths to citizenship, to prosperity and hope for the families who stay in Haiti and live in Haiti. And one of my goals is to make sure that I be the link between the Haitian diaspora and you have. I think we now have 11 Haitian elected officials in New York. Is that right, Farah? Isn't that amazing? Working with our Haitian elected officials to be the link between the powers in Washington and the administration, getting them to do more, but listening, not having the repeat of 2010 where no one listened and all that money went down, no one knew where it went, but listening to the diaspora and getting, getting help and results and advice and listening to them. So thank you for letting me share the podium. Thank you, this great organization, the National Haitian American Elected Officials Network, and I look forward to working with you into the future. Alex, thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh my God.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Whoa. Yes.
Photo.
Yes, photo.
Photo is good. And let's have our elected officials come, Farah, Clyde, Danique, is Eugene here?
Yes.
Is that Rita?
And we're about to add two more, two more to the roster.
Good. I didn't mention Rita Joseph, a newly elected councilman who's a great, great, going to be a great legislator, and she just came in, so I didn't announce her when she got here.
Just slide down, just later to get away from the podium.
How do we do this?
Just like slide.
Yes. Can you see us, everybody back home?
Just tighten up a little bit.
Right here, three, two, one.
Great. One more right here. Right here.
Wait, one more. Pastor Striker and Reverend Cockfield are wonderful.
Oh, Reverend Cockfield is here.
Right here.
Ah, I didn't see you. They told me you were away.
My dad is.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, I mentioned him or you, one of you. It's a junior. Thank you. Right here, this is Garrett, my man. Whose camera is that, Garrett?
This is, uh, I, Brendan, my camera.
But make sure everyone has their camera here. Does the organization have it? They have a screen.
Well, we use it.
Alex, Alex. Grab that, Tyson. So you can put it on the organization's website. Great, thank you, Pastor. Where's Pastor Striker? Thank you for being here, my friends.
I know we have to have you on the Sunday. I like that. But the opposite way, as I said, I have Catholic Church churches and Christians.
Okay.
I don't, I didn't have.
Right, right, right. So that's your mother, Jesus, and I'm Alice.
Everyone, please give us just one minute as we're getting more and more, just a few photos.
Thank you for having me.
I said it's official. It's official.
Right here.
Where's the mic?
I go.
You're gonna?
Thank you.
I think it was very.
We'll try to help. Nice to meet you, process. Yes. Oh my God. I don't want to disrupt the whole, people, you know, we don't want to stop the progress.
And as they are taking pictures, we want to recognize Sabrina, come on, Sabrina, our secretary from the New York chapter is here. Also, we have Rita Joseph and Mercedes, who are running for, they're going to be adding to the New York chapter of newly elected in about less than 15 days. Sabrina, come on over and say a few words real quick, and then we're going to wrap up and then Clyde do the closing. Madam Lewis, is Clyde doing the closing once we're done? No, no.
So, my name is Man Sean Spear, Vice President of the Chicago City School District, also Secretary of the New York Chapter, and I would just like to thank everyone for your choice today. Uh, just that, you know, it takes all of us to come together to make a difference and to, um, make things happen for our brothers and sisters in New York. So, basically, you know, we, we don't apart here in our, in our states, and we come together together. Thank you for being here.
And now we're going to call Eugene, and we'll quick just, just put us a one-minute greeting. Great.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Chair. I want to be very, very grateful. It is such an honor and pleasure for me to be here with my colleagues, Haitian American elected official, because at this very important moment, it is very important, it is imperative that we all come together to fight together with our partners in the United States to ensure that our brothers and sisters receive the respect and the link and the dignity, and also for them to feel it properly. As we know, we Haitian, we have contributed to United States, and United States is a land of immigrants, and all immigrants to this country to contribute to the fabric of United States. I'm not going to say too much about it, we all know that, but it is very important that we elected official, Haitian elected official, for brothers and sisters in the diaspora, and also for adults in Haiti, we continue to fight to demand respect for Haitian immigrants who are coming to United States. Let me go through back to that. We all know the wonderful, the tremendous contribution of immigrants to the greatness of United States. As a matter of fact, I want to take the opportunity to advise everyone who is watching now through the net to the connection of Frank Bushardt as Jean-Baptiste Poyet du Sable Boulva. Who is Jean-Baptiste Poyet du Sable Boulva? The founder of Chicago is Haitian. He was Haitian. Jean-Baptiste Poyet du Sable is gone by all history at the founder of Chicago. If you want to know who is he or who he was, please go to the internet, look for Jean-Baptiste Poyet du Sable, you will see the tremendous contribution of Jean-Baptiste Poyet du Sable to United States. Remember, November 14, 2021, this year, at the corner of Prime and World and Frank Bushardt, you are all invited. Thank you so very much. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, thank you, good job.
Thank you so much, Member Eugene, and being a trailblazer and a leader in our community. Thank you so much. To wrap up before we call Clyde up and Debbie Lewis to close up, we will continue to fight the administration, and as we are moving forward, there are 13 asks that we ask the administration, and those 13 acts, you could go to our website, which is www.nion.org, www.nion.org, we ask you to share those. We're going to continue to mobilize. Tomorrow, we'll be in New Jersey doing our town hall in all of the states that where we have our members, we're going to do what we do. As you heard, the, as you, Lea Schumer mentioned earlier, that this is a land for all of us, and all we are asking the administration is for due process. We're not asking for anything different, and we're not asking for anything in addition. We are asking for due process, and that's why we're going to conclude with Member Clyde now, but before we do, have a moment of privilege from Member Eugene, which will have 30 seconds.
Thank you so much. I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to recognize one of my colleagues from the City Council, the Chair of the Black Rattina Asian Caucus, David Miller.
Yes.
Thank you so very much. Always with us, we've been volunteering for TPS and family reading education every time that we are doing something in the City Council, that's been always with us. Thank you so very much, Jack. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh my God. Thank you so much, and we appreciate that because with friends like you, we cannot do this alone. We definitely, um, friends along the way to do this again. Thank you again, and we're going to continue to advocate and do what we do, and we ask you to follow along. And Clyde, before you finish, I ask one of Lisa to come up to explain and conclude on the great work that you've been doing in collaboration with our organization in New York serving the migrant that are here. What's happening in Haiti is something that we'll be addressing with the State Department for the next few weeks, and we're going to reach out to our congressional leaders, to our congressional members, members of the Black Caucus, as well as members of Neon, who are going to be mobilizing to make sure that we have a solution that we'll be reached because at some point, we're going to have to meet somewhere in the middle. Because what's going on right now in Haiti is heartbreaking. And with that being said, I'm going to call Member Clyde now.
Again, so a couple of things. First of all, we're, we are, we have heavy hearts and heavy minds, of course, and being Haitian and Haitian-American, we take care of America, we take care here, but we have to take care of Haiti. We're taking care of Haitian-Americans here, we're taking care of Haitians here and abroad. We have difficult burdens, but again, I'm very hopeful for what we can do and what we will do together, and I am very, very excited that, that Haiti will be a better place, seeing what we have here and all the talent that we have. Also, again, I have to recognize this house, again, with Reverend Cockfield, that allowed us to have this event here. Thank you for us having this event at this great institution, this great school, this great church. A couple of things, we're going to talk about, I'm going to focus on the legal response to what's happening, but we have to make sure that we address what's happening with the laws here in America. We're not asking to change any laws, we're asking to make sure that we abide by the laws of this country to make sure that we hold America accountable. And we're speaking as Haitian-Americans, but we're also speaking as Americans. We are elected officials in America. We have to make sure that America abides by its laws, by its promises right here on this land. Do you know that in the Constitution, even people that are, that are accused of terrorism have constitutional rights? Even people that are accused of murder have the right to due process. That's in the Constitution, that's baked in this country's laws. We have to make sure that we hold this country accountable for all. We also have to make sure that, what is the path forward for Haiti, right? What is the path forward for IED? Who's going to help us get through? Well, you, the diaspora. But what's important about, asking about the diaspora, the diaspora is wider than whether you have Haitian blood that runs through your veins. I'm very excited that Councilman Danique Miller is here, who's the Chair of the Black Puerto Rican Latino Caucus. The diaspora are people of color. We, they have, we have a special opportunity to make sure that in black and brown countries, we are investing properly in black and brown countries. The conversation should not only be charity. Black and brown folks have a responsibility to invest in black and brown countries. Together, we want to make sure that we get through this together. Now, let's talk about what the response is legally for, for, for Haiti. One, many people and, and the Majority Leader, Senator Chuck Schumer, talked about Title 42, and we, a lot of people talk about that. What is that? Donald Trump, when he was in office, used a law called Title 42 to, to say that when people come to this country, when migrants come to this country seeking asylum, right? When any person that comes to this country seeking asylum has the right to due process. If people accused of terrorism, if people accused of murder have rights to due process, someone that is trying to come to this country has the right to see whether or not they can have asylum. That's a basic right in America. Well, during the pandemic, Donald Trump closed the borders, remember, build the wall, close the borders? He closed the borders and said, used the law called Title 42 and said, nobody can get that kind of hearing, and we send them back no matter what. And that's what happened, that's what Title 42 is in effect. So what happened? The, and then old administration left, new administration comes in. We find out that that same policy was continuing to be used. So a group called the ACLU filed a lawsuit in court that is before federal court, and a federal court judge in Colorado said, in September, said, you know what, America? You can't use Title 42 anymore. That's illegal. You have to give people seeking asylum the right to these asylum cases. Well, the Department of Justice, this Department of Justice appealed and said they don't want to do that. What we're doing, what we're doing now is NEON, this organization, the National Haitian Elected Official Network. Elected Official Network, has entered into that lawsuit to make sure that we file an amicus brief to make sure that we are in response, saying that, that illegal use of that law should not be used. And we're fighting that not only for Haitians, for everybody. It doesn't matter if you're Haitian, Mexican, Chinese, Yugoslavian. It cannot be used for anybody that comes to this land seeking asylum should be able to have the due process and go into asylum. That's what the lawsuit is about and Neon is standing on the shores to fight the legal fight for not just Haitians, for all immigrants. So, completely, you know, so thank you for, for watching that, that lawsuit. Another thing that, that Neon is doing is we have attorneys that, that have experience to make sure that we protect the migrants that are here. One attorney we're working with is Stephanie Delia, who is, we're trying to organize, that's Stephanie, thank you. Stephanie has been leading, uh, QWI efforts, uh, for protecting immigrants across the city and we're trying to make sure that we organize, one thing in the diaspora that we're trying to make sure is that we have strong institutions and strong organizations and that's something that we must do in America and for Haiti. And we're, we're making sure that we create something like a legal defense fund, uh, to make sure that we protect ICN's here and abroad legally. We have to make sure moving forward, we have enough legal talent to make sure that we are not in a position where we're, we're swimming on water and we're trying to survive. Here with the diaspora, what we have now, with all these elected officials, with all these powerful organizations here, we have to be in a better place. But speaking of organizations, we have very talented organizations here in Brooklyn, here in New York and around the country. I'm gonna introduce to you some powerful people from, from two of those such organizations that are right here, you can talk about some of the work that they've been doing. One of the organizations is DREP and EDA Youth and I'm, uh, uh, introducing Chair Mona Lisa and Betty Augustine. You are.
Thank you so much, Assemblyman Benham. I think you saved me from coming up here with heavy hearts, I'm coming up here with hopeful feelings, feeling better, knowing that Neon is going to fight for our people. That being said, my introduction or the amount of time that I was going to take to address you will shorten, it will lessen thanks to Neon. DREP, as you've heard, is disaster relief, emergency preparedness and I'm one of the proud founders and Chair of DREP. And I'm glad to have Betty, who I call my partner in crime, because this work is not new to us. I must tell you before I even get into what we've been doing lately with migrants, that during the pandemic, we were, both of us were on the road serving our migrant brothers and sisters, because I work for the Department of Education and I heard the cries of those children. I made sure, we both made sure that they graduated with little resources. We did homework on WhatsApp. I don't know if you're Haitian, you know about WhatsApp University, WhatsApp Medical Center, we do everything on WhatsApp. So it is not by accident that you see both of us standing here, sharing this load. So again, because a lot of the things that we're going to mention to you, Clyde, thank you Clyde, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Councilmember Disney, for taking time out of your busy schedule to travel all the way from Florida to come here and listen to our cries and I'm grateful to Councilmember Farah Lewis, who has been a strength, who has been a wind beneath our wing. Councilmember, I adore you, I respect you, thank you for being a woman of your word, thank you for risking your own life to go out there in Texas and, and you take, you took the blow for us, thank you so much. So, moving forward, I'd like to, um, share a little bit of what our mission and our vision is. Obviously, um, in these hard times where we don't have the necessary resources, we are, uh, we are not yet an organization, we are a committee. Um, we're not going to mislead you, but eventually we will get to be an organization, but right now, we're supported by, again, like the Senator said earlier, the Haitian diaspora, our brothers and sisters from the community, community-based organization, community leaders who have gotten together, again, on WhatsApp University, I'm not embarrassed to say, we are a group that we started out with WhatsApp. I put all my friends together and I included all our elected officials, doctors, lawyers, you name it, but thanks again to people like Stephanie Delia, uh, one of our attorneys, who had stood with our migrants. I get tons and tons of phone calls every single day, I don't know how people got my number, but you'll be surprised that the little work that some may tend to minimize is, is, is extending itself to other states beyond New York. I thought we were just a, an organization beyond, just within the quad state area, New York and Jersey, Philadelphia and Connecticut, but we're extending to other states like Georgia, Louisiana, okay? So, today, um, I'm going to pass you, uh, Betty, who's going to share with you some of our latest statistics. Okay. Okay. So.
Thank you, that's Mona Lisa, hello everyone, special hello to my councilman, that Denise Miller, I'm from Queens. And hello, hello everyone, my, again, my name is Betty Aristid Augustine, I am the founder of the organization called EDA Youth. In EDA Youth, we answer the question, how do we waste two months' minutes today through workshops and mental health? Um, I send before you today, as a proud Haitian immigrant, my father took the risk to come here and the same risk that my dad took to come here to allow me the opportunity to be here, allow you, your family the opportunity to be here, that's the same risk that our migrant took to be here. So we just want to give you, um, concrete information, how, how we've been helping the migrant. Um, as our, um, Dr. Farah said, we are helping everyone from everywhere, New York, New Jersey, Florida and Dr. Mona Lisa, I don't know how she does it, but every day we get calls from the detention where we add funds for the families there to get, to get food. So, uh, in New York, we do have welcome centers, uh, we have one right now at Black Bat's Church, which is in Flatland and, um, we have it on Wednesdays and Fridays and so far, we've helped over two hundred and fifty migrants. Um, we provide food, um, we have a Metro Plus there that's providing insurance and Stephanie, 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 thank you. Stephanie, we call Stephanie the same day, Stephanie is mobile, she, she, not only she's mobile, one of our migrant called and told me, Ms. Stephanie not only went inside with me, Ms. Betty, what she did was she put me in a cab to make sure I got home safe, because she had a daughter. Ms. Stephanie, God bless you, thank you and thank you for the show, my goodness. And also, we partner with New Jersey, um, I know Dr. Farah will tell you more, there's over five hundred migrant there where they also provide housing and we, not only we have legal services, the welcome center that gives, uh, provide insurance, we, we do the housing and just so you know, a lot of the migrants, although they are being placed at host house, some of them are getting kicked out for whatever reason, so we, we really need to, to get a building, we really need to get out on. And also, we have translation committee, we have policy committee and we have job committee where we're giving, looking and, and giving them jobs and Mona Lisa, myself, we are registering students, some of the, um, parents, they don't, they don't speak English, so we are working with DOE, um, teachers also, um, register the students. And any one of you here, your friends, we're also looking for corporate sponsorship, we're not looking to event the, the will, as our Dr. Mona Lisa said, with other organizations, let's just link with them, a lot of the organizations do match, um, corporate sponsoring to, again, together, we're, we are strong and what I always say, I, I look at us as our hand, each one of us, whether we're councilmen, assemblywoman, state assembly, with this hand, with this hand, I cannot lift this paper with one finger, together I can pick up the book. So together we can change the, what's happening, together we can make the change the lives of the migrants, so this is us, we are stronger together, so let's continue to work together to impact, to change. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Members of the Congress, I'd like to invite you to be partnered with us, if you're a business watching this live, please feel free to call us, my number is six four six two four three six eight five seven, I'm looking forward to having our migrants have their first Thanksgiving dinner, uh, we're looking for sponsorship, we're looking to try and do a toy drive and we know Neon is going to be very instrumental, Councilmember Lewis is definitely going to be on our side doing that, so, thank you.
Okay. Merci un peu, lundi tout le monde encore merci un peu, sans plaisir, nous dégagé en joie, nous on est fini, la petite, merci et nous on s'aggrave, après ça, la petite milliardaire de Léo, téléimage, radio, déjà, H10, Léo, les mots de chaud, HNN, Haiti, Afrika et il faut radio, 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 solidarité et showtime, encore, merci un peu, ma café ça, avec tout, merci, merci encore, et deux, ok, passe bonne nuit et bonjour, merci encore pour le chien, ni en Europe, tout ça fait, Fana, Chabouba, Clyde, Chabouba, et avec tout, et Léo, merci, merci un peu, um. Sabrina, you need to come up, you need to come up, thank you so much, I'm following that you do, Farah, you close.
We'll have Sabrina close, but Uten wanted to mention there's a march that's happening on November nineteenth, we also have one in New York City happening on November thirteenth, you have thirty seconds to mention March, right?
So. So, real quick, I, um, I just want to say that, uh, Mr. Jackson here, uh, has put together, yeah, put together a, um, a march in Washington DC, which should be universal, uh, which is very, very imperative, because it's all connected, we want to get Florida involved, we want to get New York, we want to get New Jersey involved and so we have five seconds.
We will send the information.
Good morning, everyone, just a good evening. I'm Jackson Rockingstar, I'm the President of Cabinet Chamber of Commerce and also the Chair for Little Haiti DK, whose mission is to preserve, to harness, to showcase and to celebrate all of the social, cultural institutions within the area we call Little Haiti DK. We are calling for a march on Washington on November nineteenth. We believe that this mistreatment, the mistreatment of Haitian migrants, Haitian asylum seekers is absolutely horrific, we need to fight and fight for our interests in every single venue, we have, we need to do it civically, legally, politically and of course, through peaceful assembly, so I welcome you all to please come on November nineteenth.
Thank you.
Now we'll hear from Sabrina from Neon, who will close the program, thank you so much.
I would like to thank everyone for coming out, um, thank every, all our elected officials and our organization's, uh, leaders that came out and spoke as well. Remember Lino Fela Fosse, together we are strong and have a great night, thank you.
Sure.